Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Directors for workshop. It's so good to see everyone. It is nine oh three, March sixth, and I like to call this meeting until order. Roll call, please.
I share the bottom.
Here.
Director Buckholder.
Here.
Director Emptier.
Here.
Director P.
Here.
Director Barber.
Robert.
Director Benito.
Here.
Director Vercia Areola.
Here.
Director McKee.
Here.
We have a forum.
Great. Stand for the pledge of allegiance. We don't have this on the agenda, but I'd like to open it up for public comments. If there's anyone out on Zoom or in the chambers who would like to provide comments, you have three minutes. Seeing none of those public comments? And we'll start our presentation. So we'll start with four A, the workshop overview.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
My name's Lilitha Mouture, the general manager here at Regen Monterey. Thank you, everyone, for showing a lot of interest in our workshop. As we continue to move our organization forward. And we had new board members join our board. We wanted to make sure that we gave foundational view of what the landscape and what going on in Monterey County and what could lie in the future based on the discussions that we have today. Some of it will be for budget planning. Some of it will be for long-term planning and master planning, but the intent related to create foundational knowledge. So the leaders can make good decisions to track us on the right path of the organization. So that's one of the things. And the second item we want to get out of it is the feedback and the dialogue and the discussion. You know, we are asking for questions to come at the end of the slide deck. We have three hours for quite a bit of information. But really what I'm hoping to get out of is describing what the organization does today. Who are the current players and what are going to be some of the challenges in the future? As we continue to track this industry of making materials being able to be recycled mandates coming from legislation. And then also the need of the environment and the economics around these items. So we're very excited about presenting. So for some of the members that have been here for a while, you may hear some redundancy items. You may be aware of that already. For the new ones, this will get you the insight and get you caught up. So as we started coming back to the board and having regular board meetings. Then we have a good foundation of what the organization is doing currently. And how we've written that into what we will be doing in the future. Next slide, please. All right. So we're going to start with current member agencies. As you all know, there's two service areas within the county that are low control for the ordinance. And the yellow segment in the mapping is the area that we serve service for member agencies. So we have Prowl by the Sea, Dalryl, Marina, Monterey, Pacific Grove, San City, Seaside, Monterey County, unincorporated, the West Side, which is the Banning, Inter. Taking you into the Ketchikan area down around this grade and into Toro Park area. You also have Hell Beach Community Services District. So nine member agencies in total.
Question. Is the garrison, like the Presidio of Monterey technically included in the jurisdiction where they exist? So like the locked Presidio, is that included in part of Monterey?
It is not, you know, government entities can decide who they want to partner with and have an agreement with. So schools, military bases, all them have the ability to negotiate outside of the franchise agreement.
But they're not member agencies. They're way, they're not member agencies to bring their waste here?
They are not. They would have an independent contract brander. So again, a reminder, we'll try to track questions at the end of the slide deck. This one is very short. But we will get to the Q and A. Member franchise haulers, and we emphasize franchise haulers. Because these are the haulers that have a long-term agreement with municipalities like Marina, Seaside, and all the members that we just talked about. And we have three different haulers in the area and we wanted to identify them. Greenways services, seven of the nine member agencies. I'm not going to go through them all again, but it is all of them with the exception of Monterey proper and the unincorporated area of Monterey County. We have waste management that again services the unincorporated area. And then you have Monterey City Disposal, which services Monterey proper and also has the Tri-City area in the other jurisdiction. So some of the players do play on both sides of the municipality's waste management and Monterey City disposal currently service the two sides of the county. Regen services to franchise haulers for member agencies. Municipal solid waste is delivered to Regent's landfill. Probably seventy to seventy-five percent of our revenue. Yard trimmings and food scraps are delivered to Key Bay Compost in Yard. And we have single stream recycling that's delivered to the mer. And we have for members also another service that we provide is hazardous household waste services where you can bring your used oil, installments, paints, or process through that facility as well. Regent's contracts and agreements for processing, we have multiple. And so now we get into the area where we are outside of the member agencies. These are services that we've had negotiated through an agreement, been approved through the board. And these are agreements that help support diluting our expenses and really help us go out there and be innovative and creative with some of the technology and the ability to do so. As in, you know, summer two point O and getting that to process single stream, get away from C and D. City of Capitola and MSW and everybody on this column is solid waste. City of Scott Valley, Tommy in Santa Cruz, City of Watsonville, Waste Solutions of San Benito. And you can see the expiration dates that come with it. I think they're extremely important as we shrink into the future. It's a way for us to divest some of the revenue streams that are coming into our facility and gauge, you know, how much support do we need on outside to edit our cost and expenses? We also have green waste of San Jose. I think it's important to point out that it's whole, whole smurf residuals. Majority of the recycling has been pulled out. It's been processed. Organic has been processed. So we're getting essentially material that has already been processed. But we also have in that agreement is alternative date covered that expires in twenty thirty. We also have a single string agreement for Republic Services that provides service to the city of Salinas. Recollege to San Benito, a single stream agreement and a waste management, single string agreement. Third-party service providers on site. These are partnerships that have been developed over time for unique purposes that have helped again, reduce the cost of some of the services we would provide internally for ourselves. Key Bay Company provides processing services to compost organic materials, including yard trimmings, wood, food waste, food scraps, produces mulch, landscape products from the grinding of wood that contract expired in twenty twenty six. Don Chaping Company provides landfill excavation, aggregate, aggregate and sand processing. The contract expires in twenty twenty eight. It's year-to-year based on the availability of sand and excavation needs for the landfill and development of processing material. We also have an agreement with Veterans Transition Center to operate our last chance merchant tile. It accepts donated items from the community and diverts materials and items from going into the landfill. Merf also helps harvest materials that are good finds that could potentially be reused and resold at the last stand merchant tile. Working with the Veterans Transition Center was a great opportunity for us to continue to have that as a service to the community. The community really enjoys having an opportunity to bring reused items and get them back out there, thus saving us landfill space. And giving equipment and materials a second life, living a little bit longer before we go and put it into the landfill. And Veterans Transition Center has a new, unique aspect is that they're bringing veterans that are reconditioning themselves to a work environment and getting them back into the work field. So super exciting working with Veterans Transition Center. The manager at Veterans Transition, Freya Reed, does her extraordinary job with her commitment to the resale and having that be a public service. We also have a trillion agreement, which is they own and operate the fast bill and slow bill for C and G for our franchise truck yard and also for our own vehicle meets here as well on site. And then we also have a study going on with the Cito group, which is using wood chips and compost overs to create biochar. Biochar is a it does a couple of things. It does carpet sequestration, blocks in carbon into wooden material. Then it's used to be mixed with compost and currently being used for a lot of vineyard grow. And they're getting higher yield, less water consumption and less nutrients being needed to create their harvest. Regional waste management landscape. So we shared the map earlier where we kind of does the two sides of the flow control area. We recently seen the South County joint RFP for MSW collection. And we've seen the the proposal be rejected. Assumption is that they were not favorable at this time. We've seen high inflation. We've also seen costs and extraordinary prices and really causing a hardship on the economics within our own county. We have County of Monterey. Their contract expires in twenty twenty five and, you know, we'll be paying close attention on what the outcome of that RFP could potentially be. City of Salinas expires in twenty thirty five. San Benito County has less than ten or fifteen years of disposal capacity. Remains out of county wasted being redirected here currently. And, you know, paying close attention to San Benito decisions on whether they would support a landfill expansion or if they want to create a transfer station or how they want to handle the material waste. And they're out there looking right now. They're researching what their opportunity is and also what their risk and challenges are with developing a landfill expansion or transfer station. Now, all of that is going to be high dollars, whether you develop a sophisticated transfer station or unsophisticated that operation to get material out. It's still a change in process and there's a lot of thought process behind it. So we'll be paying close attention to San Benito County. Waste Management's a franchise hauler agreement with the county for weight collection services in the unincorporated area. That's expiring and that's goes in tandem with the county agreement. Green Waste Franchise Hauler Agreement with seven of the member agencies is expiring in twenty thirty. That was jointly ventured in twenty fifteen where the seven cities came together to gain alignment of the process and the services that were going to be being rendered to the majority of those towns and cities. And then we have green waste of San Jose, which is about fifty percent of our material coming in to our landfill today. And they expire in twenty thirty six. So being prepared for the off-ramp or on-ramp or the continuation of doing business will be in our best interest to start preferring you know, how are we creating more revenue streams so that we don't wind up in a non-fired market for our landfill space when it comes to this negotiation in twenty thirty six? So being aware and cognizant that fifty percent of the material being delivered here will fall off in twenty thirty six. If that's what we decide and decide that we don't want out of county times or we can choose to take portions of that. Future Regent initiatives. We've been working on a white paper document that really is a document that was intended for transparency with our board, with our public. How did we get to the current state today? So there's been decisions that have been made maybe throughout the last two decades that have gotten us to the current location. That white paper document will describe the steps that got us to that location. And then, you know, how we continue to make the best decisions for the customers on the peninsula, for the region and for other agencies that may require services. Joint feasibility study has been a joint relationship with Monterey One Water to look at byproducts that we either create here or have as a processor for materials. And then as well, looking at their byproducts and coming together to see if there's a path that we can seek together. That would make sense to really keep rigs stable. Taking care of the same public customer. And so we've looked at opportunities in the joint feasibility study. The feasibility study will be coming to an end in April and we'll be back to the board to give a presentation a little bit about our findings around feasibility. Master planning. The discussions today are aimed at receiving board direction for a scope of master planning for solid waste facility permit entitlements and current development and future development. So master planning is you know, I was asked what's the difference between master planning and strategic planning? And, you know, for me, it's more detailed to master planning. It does give us a roadmap. You know, I'll reach out to Director Petriport if you want to add a little bit of comment around master planning and strategic planning.
So strategic planning is at the generally at the organizational level, which is identifying, you know, strategic initiatives or strategies around the business enterprise. While master planning is a subset under the strategic plan, so once a an initiative is identified, then it requires master planning to define how it's going to be delivered. So, you know, our discussions today are really going to be later today is around the master planning of the solid waste facility permit, which we're calling the current development now because the permit exists that in that permit are operational plans that define what infrastructure is going to be delivered. And that in there is the development plan that's been approved for Regent. Associated with the feasibility study, you know, that's identifying possible future opportunities. And, you know, future opportunities may or may not impact the current permit. So the permit modifications may be necessary for certain improvements. We'll discuss that also.
Thank you, sir. And I want to admit that with that last bullet point, there is interim services that exist today in the landfill footprint area and possible choices to their future location. Possible elimination will be discussed. Land use choices surrounding areas will be discussed. So we'll get into that a little bit of that detail as well. And at this point, I'll take any questions on this slide deck and we'll get ready to jump into the next one.
If you would like Director Brute Askew's question answered.
Sure.
So the, the western area that was highlighted in yellow of Monterey County, the western Monterey County is the organizational area.
Yeah.
And, you know, certainly the Presidio exists in that area. So it has, like any other entity, it has the opportunity to participate with Regent in reaching out to seek services for their operation. That's, you know, as a federal government entity, they do have a little, a greater latitude than others. And I think the comment or the response here is that it's definitely in the organizational area. The services are available to the Presidio or any other customer in that area. But they're not represented by Monterey, the city of Monterey. They're not represented by.
So where does that reach out?
I'm not entirely sure.
Or we don't know. That's okay. Not have an answer to it.
Yeah, I imagine they've
We cannot hear anything over here.
Especially Wendy.
I was asking about the Presidio of Monterey and the garrison. And where they're not a member agency for Regent, but they're definitely within our service area. And I was just wondering if their waste comes here or if their waste goes somewhere else. Or if there was a reason why they were or were not included as a member agency.
Yes, and we look forward to that answer over here.
So big picture, they're, you know, they're located as like an island in the city of Monterey, which is located in the western half of Monterey County, which is the western half is the organizational boundary for Regent Monterey. So they're certainly within the area that's defined for Regent Monterey as an organization. They have the opportunity, like any other potential customer, to access the services of Regent Monterey. We have certainly received some special waste requests from them when they have certain projects. And we believe that, I think they have an arrangement with Monterey City Disposal to pick up their on sideways. But that's, you know, they're contracting with Monterey City separately than the city of Monterey is arguably.
The four orchids.
In Fort Worth, it's in Fort Worth. It's coming in through green waste recovery through the hauler.
They have to realize your voices are going that way. Coming this way. So with waste management expired in twenty twenty five, how does that look substituting or if not, how will it impact the budget?
I don't think it'll impact our budget here. At the district.
Like back services?
But it will impact the service area that we're in. If there's a change in hauler or so many houses selected. So you may see a different hauler come in. You may see the existing hauler stay in. I'm very curious about the RFP process when it will be released and how many participants. And are those results going to be favorable or not for the county and the constituents within the county?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation and this, this workshop. I think this really identifies, as you pointed out, the strategic issues. And that's what this board and the district management should be talking about because these contracts, twenty fifty contracts out that, that far, we should be looking at the broad picture and focusing on the long term. I know the board, you know, we are group bulldozers. Director Ramos is always bringing very expensive equipment for her approval. But I think the focus needs to be long term. Just an observation, that's slide five, Regent's contracts and agreements for processing. Maybe clear it up on the screen. I know it's usually the master.
Are they're not numbers?
Yeah, that one.
Okay.
And a suggestion, I know that the district has up its game on transparency to the board and the public. And so there's an opportunity to even raise the level of transparency for the district and put all these agreements online that the public can easily access.
The actual agreements you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yes.
Kind of following up on Mayor Peaks and others' comments. Felipe, do you see this year and next year as kind of a pivotal point for Regent to determine our future policy on outside contracts and so many are expiring in twenty five, there's four in twenty five or twenty six, twenty twenty six there are expiring. So whether we go after them or not, it seems like we need to know, you know, if that's what we want to do. So that's my first question. If you see this as a pivotal point in time for us to decide the future policy on incoming outside garbage.
I believe we still have time. I don't think it's a pivotal point. We're still ways out from the, with that big agreement of twenty thirty six. But I think the awareness around them and the impact that they have on the organization now, whether it's a positive impact for the majority, these are all positive gains of influence for us. Mr. Guy.
On the waste management contract, it expires twenty twenty five. That's for the county. They're servicing the county of Monterey, the unincorporated county area. So that's two separate franchise areas. The expectation is that the, that structure will remain the same. And so, you know, there, I think the, the optics around that is whether or not the current contract holder becomes the future contract holder. You know, it's basically a collection service contract and for the two different areas. And the expectation is the county will find a a collection service provider and likely maintain the two franchise agreement decisions, which direct the waste to the two bodies of the county.
Okay. So I was kind of thinking of that on that slide, the twenty twenty six expiration of San Benito County, Gilway Morgan Hill. So is that a small contract? I mean, is that a small amount of stuff? So we don't need, it's not a big deal?
Yeah, it's a more recent one that came as a result of the limited capacity at John Smith Road landfill that resulted in the county to, or making the decision to only serve in county customers because it triggered less than fifteen year of landfill capacity, which is a, in, in regulation and does trigger the jurisdiction to act to establish enough alternative so that they regain more than fifteen years capacity through their study process. So we would expect that will, Regent will be asked to continue that service. And so that would be something for the board to consider.
Okay, I have two very brief comments. Felipe said twice that this, this outside waste is helping to dilute our cost and expenses. And I don't, haven't read the white paper comments or do this Friday. But I hope that the white paper is almost as blunt as that so that everybody is aware of that statement or something like it and how that relates to our rates going up or down, depending on how we handle our costs and expenses. The other comment is, or just a quick question, is the bio char pilot project going well?
The, the pilot is, is faced some of the challenges. I think there's some awareness of needs that they needed to do to get the ability to process the material as they desire on a twenty-four hour period. We did request some preliminary data for the first six months. We're in receipt of that and we'll come back and give a presentation to the board on what results we're seeing with biochar and what some. on what results we're seeing with BioChar and what some of those nuances have been with running the BioChar here at our facility. For the most part, we're, it's doing what it's supposed to do. We're learning from them processing the material and scalability, how big, how fast, when, how long, and how long it could operate without, you know, breakdown or troubleshooting. So I think we're getting the information we desire to see upfront before we track or end it or on a grander scale of BioChar. It is a very small amount that's being processed currently.
Okay, can we go to the next slide that talks about the landscape? So is today the day, or is the, the, is the strategic planning process or the master planning process, which of those processes are the appropriate time or today for us on the board to understand Regen's potential role in all of those? Like, we sit by the side of the road, or are we an active participant? Are we going after competitive, you know, RFP submittals? You know, what's our role in those? And when do we talk about that?
So the staff is at will of the board, so that topic can occur at any time in general. More specifically, it is on the strategic planning level.
Is that what we're doing today?
Not, not today, no. We do have a strategic plan for the year that we can come back and give a quarterly update and engage on that particular topic.
And, and you know, I think your participation will help us get to the point of delivering a master plan development here at the facility. So just your comments and your feedback and your curiosity, keep asking questions because we will come back with some proposal around master planning in the future. And this is where we're vetting it out, so that there's an understanding around master planning and the importance and its role in our organization as we move forward. The one that we have is from 2007, it's very dated. So we're approaching 17-year mark, 18-year mark. We would really want to make sure that we can come back and then we can get all the feedback and your participation as we're ready to develop that plan. Now it's more conceptual. Yes, or Dave?
Mayor Dogg, I think this is setting the base knowledge, the knowledge base. This setting is to get out, lay out all the different elements that need to be known by the board to participate fully in the strategic plan. So we're gonna, we're opening up the information flow to daylight all these issues. And then, so everybody's informed, we can refer back to this information as we go forward into the strategic planning.
What's the timeframe for the strategic planning process?
How long will it take?
When will it start?
Yeah, that's, that's.
We've already, we need to, eight-year strategic plan, we've already gone through action items internally here for, for this fiscal year. We'll start looking at it again and start seeing what the plan is for the next fiscal year. So we already have a strategic plan in place. Master planning is now grabbing that strategic strategies and building a pathway for internal solutions that are needed for the longer view of our organization. You know, we're looking at 100 years, we got two ponds right in the middle of the landfill that we gotta figure out what to do, that we're gonna utilize that area, we'll get to it in the future. So again, I think David really laid it out, it is foundational knowledge that is gonna give us the ability to participate in the exercise that will come in the future, based off all the information we're getting out today. It is a blueprint of what we do.
It just seems that we've been shown a couple of slides that have expiring contracts and a landscape that needs us to understand and participate in addressing where we go. And it seems like there's some 2025 and 2026 things happening. And if the strategic plan is after that, then we're, we seem to be missing our involvement in how we approach those.
It's not gonna prohibit for the engagement with the board on any of those contracts that would be expiring, Waste Connection would come to finance committee as well as a discussion as we prepare for what we want to do with it. But this, we may not get a strategic plan before we address 2026. If, if the board chooses how fast we're gonna move on any of these items. Again, this, receive the information today, stay interested, comment. And we're gonna hear these items that you're talking about is how fast can we bring it back and execute on any of these items that we're hearing is gonna take either priority precedence or is, you know, extremely important for us. You know, the pillars of our strategic plan have been innovation, the environment, and the so those three items are the big foundational spotlights of what our organization is. This is where we incorporate more of that detail that it hasn't had in some time.
Thank you.
I got a question?
Yes.
Two questions. You mentioned it, I think, last time, what, what percent from all of the stuff we get from the outside goes into our landfill? So we have a, everything that goes into our landfill, what percent of that comes from our outside contracts? About 50%? So we're good, 50% goes into. My other question is, along the same thing, we have, I don't, it would be nice to know how many landfills are gonna be going out of business in the future? What kind of, what kind, and who's available to pick up that slack in the future? Because we are a community at large as well, we're not just us, although that's our primary focus. But, I mean, it's getting, I mean, it seems like it's getting thinner and thinner as time goes by. And we also, we also have the fact that organics hopefully are gonna be eliminated from the landfill. That would also be good information to know how much, what does that mean in our overall length of our landfill? And if there is any other things that we're thinking might be coming down the line that would also eliminate what goes into landfill, that would be nice to know. Even though we may not even know what that is, but still. So I'd like to have that information down the road. And I think that should be a 20-year, 40-year strategic plan of what we foresee coming down the road and how we anticipate we're going to be a player in that.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to open it up for any public questions.
More of a comment? There's a little person in the hall, so if you look at the contract agreements you're bringing out sideways, some are with cities, some are with haulers. And that makes a difference, because when you're negotiating with a city, they can have full control. And so, whereas when you're negotiating with a hauler, sometimes you have to negotiate with them before the RFP or after you're doing it again. So it's just another factor, I think, to consider. And maybe for staff to consider, is there a preference of working with the city or the hauler?
Just to tag on to that public comment, I want to reinforce it, it is a difference. And there's a key similarity. Those, those private hauler contracts, they're serving a municipality. And so, I want to keep that in focus. Each member agency is a jurisdiction and is desiring the service. That same need for service exists in other jurisdictions. And so, as we discuss in the future, whether to participate with meeting a jurisdictional need that may not be a member agency. I think that's good to have a discussion of at that time.
All right, those public comment. Yeah, I think, you know, I want to just immediately thank everyone for being here and for giving us this information. I think there's a lot of things that have come out of this workshop, especially for the directors in terms of questions and things that we may want to address at a later time. So I would encourage all the directors to make notes of those things that you'd like to see addressed later. And then we can, we can make sure that as agendas are developed, that we, we touch on those items. Because I think, you're right, some of these things are timely and it seems like we should be talking about them. You know, maybe sooner rather than later. It's, it's hard for us personally, who aren't doing this day to day, to understand that. So anyways, I want to, you know, thank, thank everyone for being here and giving us this introduction. So Felipe, will you do one favor for me, Felipe, too, before we move on to the next presentation? Can you just quickly introduce some of the people that are in the room?
Sure, at this point, if we get ready for the next portion of the presentation, I'd like to introduce David Salsito, he's our Assistant Work Manager. He'll be here supporting Jay with some, some of the long slithers for the operation component. We also have Jameson Visser, he's our Assistant Director of Operations. And he's also gonna be supporting him as well. I think that is, is there anybody that?
Katie back, Katie back there?
Oh yeah, we have Katie O'Connor, she's our Assistant Engineer.
To the extent that you know the public, can you introduce them?
On that moment, I just called in Brian Igman, we find a call for you.
Congratulations. We have Mike Nickum in the back with Bellwies Community Service District. Maria Fernand with Monterey County, compliance officer. Then we have Patrick Matthews, CEO of Selina and Valerie Tyco. Bob and Rob from Wellington Law. And then, you know, I'd like to send appreciation to Ida, organized and prepared David as well and all the entire leadership team that came together to, you know, get all this information together. It's a vast variety, it is not singular in operation. So it took a little bit of time for us to get to where we're at. This next one, I'd like to get into the next slide there. Again, my name's Felipe Moutor, I'm the General Manager. We have Helen Rodriguez, who's our Director of Finance and Administration. We have Zoe Scholes, our Director of Communications. We have David Ramirez and Guy Pritchard, our Directors of Engineering and Compliance. And we have Bertie Torres, our Director of Human Resources. And David Ramos, our Director of Operations for the facility. At this point, we're gonna go ahead and hand it off to the directors. We're gonna share a little bit of what each director's forte is in navigating our business and our daily objectives, and some of them are short-term, some of them are long-term. It gives, it gives you a feel of complexity. And I think that was one of the objectives as well, is sometimes it looks easy and feels easy, but it's complex. It takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of energy, and a lot of coordinating of facts and information so that we can get it right. So we're excited to get into this next segment at this point. I'd like to share a little bit of what you see here. We have some work employees around some bales, cleaning up some bale material. We have a mechanic there that supports landfill operations and the equipment repairs. We have Thomas Avila, he's our, one of our co-genlands where we manufacture energy from landfill gas. There's an aerial view of the facility and starting seeing how massive it is to navigate and get through the area. We have a landfill operator there on pile of trash, as you can tell. We've got a lot of work to be done, see a lot of plastic, a lot of plastic bags, materials in the landfill pile that could be a landfill pile. We have one of our operators that helps move material from side to side. Andres comes with a very good heart and he's always in a good place. So I'm always excited to talk about our employees. Here's a work employee under the material that's being received on the north end of the material recycling facility. There's our tire piles, putting tires aside. And at this point, I'd like to introduce Bertie Torres, our Human Resource Manager, tell me a little bit about her department.
Good morning. Me, Chair Shirley, of the board. It is my pleasure to present the Human Resources Department update. Before I get into the details within the Department of HR, just a general overview of the organizational staffing. So we have 135 budgeted positions, all of which are allocated to bargaining units. We have a total of four bargaining units. 13 employees are not affiliated out of the 135. And they're allocated among 12 departments. That's the general overview of the staff and how it's allocated. So these are the, what you see on the screen are the human resources or key human resources functions. Fatima Ochoa is our HR Coordinator, she's amazing. Have an amazing team of three, including myself, so amazing team of two plus me. Fatima Ochoa, HR Coordinator, and Jessica Dacus is our HR technician. Jessica primarily handles recruitment and performance management. While Fatima handles, she does a lot of the coordination of employee events and employee benefits and such. So key functions, employment law compliance, labor and employee relations, talent acquisition, which is the recruitment, coordinating all of the interviews, preparing interview questions, and assisting managers in making those selections for their departments. Personnel policy compliance, we work with unions when necessary to update human resources policies or personnel policies. And update also based on changing regulations, changing laws. Performance management, there's a process, we have a pretty it's a little bit of a cumbersome process, but as you know, it is important for managers to help employees identify opportunities for improvement and address performance issues. So it's, it's not something that managers enjoy doing and, and human resources supports them in making sure that we complete those processes. Benefits administration, employee wellness, and this is one of our very newer functions that we've implemented here at the district within the last three to four years. Very proud of some of the things that we've done for employees under the employee wellness. We've introduced a mini farmer's market a couple of years ago where we worked with an organic farmer from Watsonville. And during the summer months, we, July, August, and September this year, we had the organic farmer come on site under a tent and employees were provided with a bag full of produce, as you can see here, strawberries, carrots, all organic. And it was, it was part of the employee wellness program. In addition to that, we do Wellness Wednesdays. We did that all previous year where on Wednesday, once a month, we purchase fruit from local grocery store and send it out in the break rooms so that employees can grab a healthy snack once a month from the break room. A couple of other things that we've done is the biometrics testing. We have a great partnership with Montage or Community Hospital, Monterey Peninsula, for our employee wellness. And they provide monthly wellness newsletter, which we posted in the break room. And at times, we also push it out via email. What else do we do? Employee wellness, biometrics testing and coaching. We do that every other year, just to ensure that employees understand where they are in terms of their cholesterol levels, their diabetes, sugar levels. And they, after the test, they are provided with a coach, one-on-one coach, on how to manage better. And we hope that employees are also, encouraging employees to also have their annual physical at their doctor's office. We also attempted to eliminate unhealthy food from our vending machines. That did not go so well. So we, we at least compromised and allowed 60-40 percentage of unhealthy food into the vending machines again. So that was another opportunity that we took to try to encourage healthy eating, healthy lifestyle. Workers' compensation and needs management is also handled by HR and employee recognition and rewards. So a few years ago, about five years ago, we revamped our employee recognition and rewards program. We created a, we worked with a focus group. Uh, we created a, uh, we worked with a focus group which represented, um, employees from various departments, frontline staff, to look at our current employee recognition program and, uh, evaluate it. Tell us why you're not utilizing it. So there were components within the program that allowed for peer-to-peer recognition, but we saw very, very little peer-to-peer recognition. Um, in fact, there may have been two or, two or three, uh, peer-to-peer recognition per year, which told us this isn't working. And after ramping it and hearing from employees, what it is that they, uh, appreciate about each other and, and, and how they would like to, uh, extend appreciation to one another. We developed a new program and I'm very proud to say that it has been, uh, very successful. And I'll show you the next slide with the number of peer-to-peer recognitions per year. And then there's a second element to the employer recognition program, which is a supervisor to employee, uh, recognition. And again, very successful, um, and very proud of, of the, the outcome. Uh, this time, up or down, you're on it? I'm on, okay, very good, thank you. Um, a couple of the, or a few of the highlights in twenty twenty-three, uh, employee turnover. So employee turnover rate is a key performance indicator that measures the number of employees who leave the organization voluntarily. Uh, region has historically had a very low turnover rate. Um, and twenty twenty-three was no exception with a four-point-seven percent turnover rate. Um, and measuring turnover is important because it helps us understand the effectiveness of our, our recruitment, uh, retention and talent management strategies. Uh, so actually, five-point-five, alright, my note was a little off. So five-point-seven per seven employee separations voluntarily. And as you can see, moving out of the area, uh, leaving, uh, for completely new career change. Um, not this last year, but previous year, we've had a, an employee who was a sorter or he was a lead on the sort line, lead to be a San Jose Police Officer. So he had been going to school and working, uh, in that and so happy for him and, and one of the, why we want to see employees lead for those types of career changes. Um, we also, uh, region takes great pride in its record of career growth within the organization. And we have many examples of employees who came in at a entry-level role and, uh, and have promoted to, uh, skilled positions. Many of our landfill operators and merk operators are examples of this. Many of them started as a sorter or a litter picker and now they are, uh, operating heavy equipment. Um, last year we had four promotions, uh, I'm sorry, three promotions and four lateral transfers. Employee longevity, uh, as you can see, here's, here's where we are in terms of, um, years of service, um, total of employees, uh, up until twenty twenty, we had a much higher, uh, fifteen or more year employee, uh, tenure. Uh, in twenty twenty, uh, as a cost-saving measure, uh, due to the impacts of COVID, uh, the district or region, um, uh, implemented or offered a early retirement incentive to employees with fifteen or more years of service. And we had fifteen employees, uh, uh, accept the early in, uh, retirement incentive and fifteen employees who have been with the district for fifteen or more years retired. So, um, probably I would, if I would, um, say that if we had not had COVID, they would probably still be working here. HR compliance, proud of our record of, of not having any grievances last year. And frankly, I've been here ten years, we've never had a grievance. So, uh, and zero regulatory compliance, uh, complaints in twenty twenty-three. Uh, employee satisfaction, we did a survey in twenty twenty-three. Um, and we're really proud of the, the participation, seventy-five percent of employees responded. The survey quest, asked, uh, affirming questions such as, I am proud of region's work. I'm proud of region and the work that I do. I would recommend region to friends and family to work here. I have an open, honest, respectful communication with my direct supervisor. I have enough training and resources to do my job well. And good work is recognized. So based on these questions, these are, these were the, the top, um, positive, uh, responses that we received. Um, as you can see, it, it, based on the respondents who participated, there is great pride in region's work. Uh, they would recommend, uh, region to friends and family. Trust among employee and supervisor is high. Training, resources and tool, employees feel that they have what they need to do their jobs. And, uh, recognition for work, good work is, is, uh, felt. Um, here's the employee recognition and rewards, the program that we, uh, rolled out in twenty twenty. Uh, it, you can see from twenty twenty-three, we had thirty, uh, gem awards are going the extra mile. These are the supervisor to employee recognition. So we have thirty in twenty twenty-three. The High Five Award is the peer-to-peer recognition. We had twenty-seven of those in twenty twenty-three. And then we had, um, we have what we call an attendance excellence award. And this recognizes or, um, rewards employees who have, uh, managed their pay time off responsibly and have, uh, called out four or less times in the year. So we have sixty-six percent of our employees receive that award. Uh, employee events, uh, we, we have a very, um, creative and engaged, uh, social committee. Uh, again, made up of employees from various departments throughout the, the organization. And, uh, these, we have a budget that's allocated to this, this, for this purpose. Uh, it's not, it's not very much, it's about a hundred dollars per employee per year. So, uh, employee, the, the committee, the social committee plans events, uh, within that budget. So last year, obviously, the, the summer, the summer, uh, farmer's markets, the, um, the summer picnic, which is at, um, did we do that at Torren Park?
No.
Oh no, we did that at, at Royal Oaks Park last year. So we have a family summer picnic, employees and their families, um, are welcome to attend. Uh, we have the Fall Wellness Fair, flu clinics, uh, winter, uh, holiday dinner, which many of you attended. And thank you for that, we appreciate you, board members, coming and, and, um, being there for, for the employees. And then we have a quarterly employee town hall, which, uh, is something new that Felipe has introduced to their organization, uh, where, you know, it's, 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 it's a lunch and it's outdoors, um, employees are rotated through. Um, and it's a way to, um, you know, uh, see employees from other departments, mingle with them, have a nice lunch. And it's, there's not a lot of speaking or presenting, um, but there's no need for that because one other thing that Felipe has introduced to the organization since he's been here is the, um, GM huddles. So he comes out to each department on a regular basis, at least once a quarter, and at, in their element, in their workspace and shares information, uh, that is decisions from the board or, uh, high-level decisions, uh, so that employees are always informed and are aware of what's going on. So that's the HR, uh, Department Update, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, alas.
Um, thank you for the presentation. Uh, I have a quick question regarding your longevity of employees. Um, between one and four years, you have fifty-two. Um, do you happen to know the median age of those individuals that are usually with you?
Um, the, the, for the,
The one through four years?
One to four years? I, I would, I would estimate that the majority are, um, under forty.
Okay. Yeah, cause your turnover rate, it says some have moved due to, um, another job, school or different career path. So I just thought, might, might that be linked, uh, for years one and four? And also what are, what is the agency doing to really keep and secure more people from five plus years? What do the agencies, such as like personal development, things of that sort?
So we do have, uh, a policy of offering promotions internally, um, exploring internal candidates before external candidates are considered, uh, for any, uh, uh, growth opportunity. That is something that is a district policy. And we also provide, uh, education assistance for those who wish to, uh, pursue higher education. Uh, this is something actually that's, uh, worked in within the MOUs, for those who have a, um, MOU, uh, that allows for reimbursement for education of up to two thousand dollars per year, uh, to pursue, um, any type of, of, uh, learning.
And I would assume that includes like certification or anything of that?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, and then your employee satisfaction survey, you received seventy-five percent, which is a good percentage of, of your employees responding back, but how big was that pool? Who, who was that sent on to?
It was sent to all employees that are non-leadership. So non-manag- managers and directors excluded, so supervisors and, and everyone else.
Do you have the number of?
Um, yeah, I, I, I don't have it.
Nowhere.
But, but I can, uh, share those results with you in email.
Okay, that was great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Director Pralito?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank you, this is really a great model for other agencies. And I wondered, um, is any of this employee-driven or is it all coming this way? And secondly, do you see any rewards of this wonderful human resources program when you go to negotiate? Is it ever mentioned as part of the negotiations?
You know, that's a great question, Director Pralito, um. I don't, I don't, frankly, I don't hear these things being mentioned during labor negotiations. The focus is really on compensation, uh, uh, from the union side. And so, um, that's the second question that you asked, what was the first question?
Uh, do the employees,
Oh, yes.
Uh, formulate this reward and recognition program?
Yes, so the employee recognition and rewards program was developed with input from employees. So this was the, the focus group that came together, which were twelve employees from different departments, um, looking at the current program that existed and hearing from them, why did they think that people weren't utilizing it? And then asking them, what, what do you evaluate, what do you appreciate about a peer? And how would you like to be recognized from your manager supervisor? And based on that input, we developed the, the new employee recognition program, um, which is based on, on input from them. And also, the, the manager, the, the gem award was based on input from managers and supervisors also. So we, we didn't just, um, develop this without, uh, their input.
The reason I mentioned the, the part about, you hear about it during negotiations is last year we tried values-based negotiations, lifestyle value space. And it was actually very successful to get the conversation started. It all comes down to compensation and, in many ways at the end. But when you start a little bit at the value space, quality of life, quality of working relationships, it sort of levels out some of the concern at the table that sometimes, yeah, is more like this. So, uh, this is just such a, you know, a, a great plan. I, I really think it's valuable.
Thank you.
Director McKeat?
Um, couple of just general questions on the numbers, how many employees do we have?
A hundred and thirty-five, well, we're budgeted for one thirty-five, we have some vacancies.
Okay, one thirty-five, and, uh, you break it down in different categories that are managerial, hourly, I don't, I don't know.
Yes, um, oh, the, primarily they're broken down by, uh, bargaining units. So, um, out of the hundred and thirty-five budgeted positions, thirteen are not affiliated with any bargaining unit. Everyone else is, is allocated to a, uh, bargaining unit.
And you don't break them down by hourly managerial or?
Well, uh, not, it's not, not really hourly because, uh, well, the bargaining units, um, are primarily how the function, their, their functions, whether they're administrative, clerical, they are all in the support unit. And, um, everyone is hourly except for management. So frontline supervisors are also hourly employees, so the vast majority are hourly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think forty-two percent of our operating expenses are, are, are employment costs. And what makes this organization most notable to the outside world are all the extra things we do, not the landfill. The landfill is, that's why we're here, but all these other things, uh, make us great and take employees. And when the re- when the recession hit, I think we were around a hundred and twenty-two, I don't know how many employees we were then, but we, about that. Then we went down to about a hundred and ten. And so that was kind of, you know, closer to bare bones. And so I just think it's important that we understand as a policy that what makes us great costs money. And, you know, we should reaffirm that commitment, you know, every ten years or so. Um, but is that accurate? You know, how, how, I guess my question is, how low did we go from a hundred and thirty-five, now a hundred and thirty-five? How low did we go in the two thousand ten-ish timeframe?
Hundred and eight.
Hundred and eight.
And we were at a hundred and twenty-eight.
So we were a hundred and twenty-eight, went to a hundred and eight, now we're to a hundred and thirty-five. That sequence is really important, I think, for us to understand. If you love what we have, it's taken this rebuild to get to where we are now. So that was just it, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, I'm gonna do a little bit of a time check here. Berta, thank you so much for your presentation. Um, I think ideally, we were kind of hoping to be completed with the, um, overview of the departments by about ten-thirty to give us, and then give us a little bit of a break so that we can have at least forty-five minutes, uh, to talk about the last portion, which is also really important, all of this is important. So, um, I think if, if we have fine detailed questions, we might want to leave them, make a note of those. We can call the person, um, off to the side or we can bring this back as a discussion at another time. So, um, thank you, Berta, we appreciate it. So we're gonna, we're gonna keep going through these, learning more about the departments.
Oh yeah, good morning, everyone. Um, I'm Jay Ramos, the Director of Operations. Uh, the operation team has five departments and nine employees. Um, the help me today, I am David, and Jameson, no, David.
So, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Um, so my name is David Salcedo, I'm the Assistant Manager for the Merk. And our department has forty-nine employees with an operating budget of nine-point-five million. And our services provided is single-stream recycling and C and D material processing. And we have two drop-off areas, one for the public and another one for the single-stream, uh, recycling. And our main initiative this year is, uh, basically focused a lot on employee safety. And with all the machinery that we have, we have a different, about a hundred different lockout, tagout procedures. And we have a lot of hand injuries. So we have some new gloves that we're actually trying out, Vincent, if you don't mind. But you can see the, the new hex armored gloves, which is a lot thicker glove, which will help employees not get cut. You gotta imagine, uh, with about forty different employees taking their hands inside the materials about thirty times per minute. It's roughly over a thousand picks per minute that we're, we're, we're doing. So, and like I said, twenty-five percent of our injuries were due to hands. And we're hoping that these gloves will actually help, uh, mitigate some of that. Aside from that, we have, uh, AI robotics and we currently have six, uh, optical sorters and one scanner that's from Glazier. And that scanner actually helps us see what's going into our residue pile to mitigate some of that stuff from going in there, so to let us know on, um, up-to-date time, so it can tell us what's going in there. Um, as for productivity improvement, we do, uh, surveys so that we can see what we're, we're processing. And to eliminate any downgrades or rejections from the material that we ship. And to eliminate any downgrades or rejections from the material that we ship out. Something else that we have to deal with is the material flow. So we're constantly getting about 500 to 600 tons per day. And it's usually going into two piles. But those two piles, you know, like you said, 600 tons coming in, we have to ship 600 tons out on a daily basis. And so the challenge is, you know, getting everything organized, keeping it organized, and being able to ship it out on a daily basis. One of the new streams that we've had recently is ag build. In Monterey County, we get a lot of agriculture. And so for the last few years, this has really picked up for us. And we're hoping to build on top of that and try to keep some of this material out of the landfill. So we're always looking for new ways with health engineering or a master plan of 3.0, you know, in the future. So Regent Monterey's MIRF is 125 square foot recycling plant located on 20 acres. And it's built by bulk handling systems, VHS. Our single-stream sorting system runs at 35 tons per hour. And has 88 conveyor belts, seven screens, six optical sorters, four magnets, one bag breaker, two knee-hot separators, which basically separates a lot of the lights from the heavies, eight walking floor bunkers, one single ram, Paul Baylor, and again, one Baylor only.
I wrote it down too.
We also have four departments that help transport and organize some of the bales. And you can see some of them are outside right here to your left. One loader, 33 employees for the single stream. And then our CND demolition is the 20 tons per hour. We have nine conveyor belts, two screens, one magnet, and we use two loaders and excavator. And 16 employees that help manage the CND processing and the 45,000 square foot public drop-off transfer station. So our inbound volume consists of about 40% single stream, 31% public drop-off, and 29% construction and demolition. And so this is what's coming in, and then this is what it's broken down to as we ship out. So as you can tell, about 30,000 tons of cardboard that go out. Running up the top three or so is mixed paper, mixed glass, and then also wood and metal that come in about a little bit over 5,000 tons each per year. And you can barely see some of this other material, but a lot of it is what has a CRV. And that's what helps keep us funded here with PET and aluminum, getting the higher CRV amounts. And none of this would be able to happen. Yeah, sorry. None of this would be able to happen without our maintenance team. They're the ones that make sure that we come in and are able to process the next day. And we have one supervisor, two day shift operators that help with operations throughout the day, and six swing shift maintenance technicians that come in at the end of the shift once the system has been shut down to perform any preventative maintenance and clean up that's needed. And that's it.
Want to talk about that picture real quick, David?
Yeah, this is, again, with the one Baylor. When we have our Baylor down, we weren't able to process. We had to wait for a part to come in. And that part actually took about two, three weeks to it was from Germany overseas. So in that time, we're not able to process any material. And you cannot tell when we're running and operational, how fast this material adds up. And it added up real fast. And we had to take a big part of our our tip floor on the public site. And it added up really fast. So 250 tons a day.
How many days did it take for you to fill up, David?
Probably about three days, four, about five days we were able to hold. After that, it was getting, getting kind of difficult. But once we were up and running, just as fast as we could get it inside the building, we were able to process everything in about a little over a week. So, but this, the Baylor had gone down. That's the cylinder that was damaged. So they had to pull that out. We had to wait for it to come in in a huge crate. Got here about 8 o'clock on a Friday night, I believe. And they were able to put it in and have it ready for us in the next morning by 6:00 AM. Yeah, but, yeah, but like I said, we have a great team overall, both operations in the MIRF and our maintenance department. That's it. Any questions?
Is maintenance in the 49?
Yeah, no, 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 no. So it's the 49 and additional.
Thank you.
Any other quick questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Salsino.
Just a quick question. How many Balers do you need? One more, two round would be nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Director Shirley and Board of Supervisors. My name is Jameson Pfister. I'm the Assistant Director of Operations here at Regent Monterey. I am going to speak about the landfill. In my career, I've spent most of my time in landfill, so whoops. So go over some details of the landfill we have out here. Currently, we have staffed 22 employees of the landfill operations team. That includes operators and maintenance crew. We have an operating budget for this year planned at $3.6 million. And, excuse me, some of the services we provide are, we're working much, very closely with the engineering team here. I can say that is very nice to have because where I'm at, usually there's consultants and there's distance and delays and all that kind of stuff. So it's really good partnership we're doing here. And the engineering team is doing a lot of good work. And we're working together as one good team. Create and maintain landfill infrastructure. So it's not just a big hole and garbage goes into it. This is a very technically designed facility that, you know, as you all know, and as you learn, that it's heavily regulated from the groundwater and the air and everything in between. So garbage doesn't stop, our customers got to get in. So the roadways to the WVR, which is from the water board, addresses stormwater issues and the stormwater runoff and all that kind of stuff to be in compliance. So there's a lot of work that goes into just the day-to-day to make sure that our customers are able to get in as well as be in compliance with all the regulatory environment that pretty much every agency in this state has an interest in what we do out here. And then manage the municipal solid waste flow. You probably wouldn't really think too much about it, just get it to the garbage and compact it. Well, some of these jobs that come in, it allows us to stage materials close to where we're working and chase ourselves with cover. So that ends up reducing the amount of resources that goes into that operation. Saves cost in the maintenance side because now we're not having to haul and use other equipments. Allows us to address other projects on site and stuff of that nature. So when we manage the municipal solid waste flow, it benefits the site as a whole. Initiatives, the engineering team is NJ, have implemented a GPS system enhancements. It's a very nice system that many of the pieces of equipment have in. The operators can actually sit in the seat and know where they're at in terms of the design that the engineering has rolled out to us. It's a flexible system. It's the high-frequency antenna is on the east side of this MIRF building here. So as you can see, and if you guys get a tour today, there's a big mound or mountain over there. Sometimes the signal is interrupted by that. So we can switch to a cellular signal and still get signal and see what we're doing as we go further over to the east. The training, as I said, the operators can be in the seat and they'll know where they're at. It gives green means that there's more fill to get to the grade. Red is, okay, now you've gone above. So we, you know, got to start working in other areas and continue building ourselves. And succession planning, as you can see, we have 22 people, about half of which are operators. This winter, we had a very big challenge as we had some medical leaves, vacations, and all that kind of stuff. We were doing operations with four operators at one point. We had to get some of our site crew, maintenance members that had some training in the garbage and help out. So succession planning is a big deal for us going forward so that when we have those issues, the operation continues smoothly and seamlessly. So the landfill operations team, we have, as I mentioned before, we have a total of 22 employees. This year, we're basically combining the crew. It's landfill operations. There'll be the operators with the maintenance side. Maintenance side goes from picking Charlie Benson, making sure it's nice and clean when you guys enter here, to building fences and other types of projects on the site to ensure that, you know, windblown litter and that kind of stuff doesn't go, you know, we're situated adjacent to the Salinas River. So there's a lot of work we got to do to make sure that we keep everything contained in this facility. And as Berta and others have mentioned, there's a lot of retention here. We got 282 combined years of experience. And there's a couple operators alone that I'm aware of that have over 30 years out here. So they've pretty much grown up here at this facility. And as you can see, there's eight with 20-plus years. So there's a lot of good retention here with the operators. But we have a couple younger maintenance crew guys. So we are thinking about the future and all the hires we do to make sure that succession planning is, ensure that the facility is well-staffed going into the future. And in the year 2023, we processed 643,000 tons of municipal solid waste. We're closed Sundays, roughly 250 days of operation here. That's about 2,500 tons plus a day that we're handling. So it's time. You got any questions?
Any quick questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just a quick question. In the carpenters' union, if you retire, you can come back in a limited capacity. So I was wondering if you had like retired operators? I know it's a kind of perishable skill, but if within five years of the retirement, as a backup, I don't know if you guys ever thought of that or if that's ever been an option, if you run out of operator because of illness?
I know in other facilities, I couldn't speak because I've about six months on the job. I know that has definitely been the case because what is important to note when you see large developments for homes and they have the big yellow iron, the big caterpillar equipment, grading and doing all their thing. The feel in the garbage is a little different. It is very, it's a very acquired skill set. So I know in past employment, we have brought people back like that. Here, I'm sure we'd be open to it if the opportunity presented itself kind of thing. But we're also, you know, trying to give opportunities to others this year with the succession planning. Since I think they're all under the same house, the union, we're going to also do the training with some of the maintenance level people and try to include some of the MIRF people. So if in the future positions open up, people, operators in the MIRF will also have those opportunities.
Thank you.
All right. If you could very quickly answer, there's always room for improvement. Where could the landfill operations improve? Very briefly.
So as I, I'll go back to this slide here. Part of the GPS system is to improve compaction. Right now, we've been working together as a team with engineering, them, sorry, excuse me, presenting us with good designs. We've been seeing an improvement in our compaction up to about 0.67, 0.68 tons per cubic yard. So it's about 1,360 tons per cubic yard. So we're basically selling airspace in the landfill. The more you can get in there, the longer the line. Industry standard would probably be about 0.75. So more planning, working with the operators, training. I've worked with my supervisors and pointed out some opportunities to improve and coach the operators. So in our defense though, we are working with some challenging geometries. We're building to the north irregular, so almost small kind of canyon pill kind of type of things. So it's not nice, what they call them pancakes layers or lifts. They're nice and orthogonal or square. So that presents a challenge when we are working with the garbage. But as we open up and build more area, those opportunities will present itself. And we anticipate seeing more increase in our compaction rate.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pfister. Appreciate it.
Okay, the landfill, yeah, plan. You know, our four engines that we have over there generate about 5 megawatt of power. One megawatt for you, the power, the site. The other four go out to the wind. There's one department that never dreamt, you know, 20 more never. And then that 20 more damage. So there's a lot moving on, there's a hundred and then well, that we have to monitor every day as part of that department. So we also have no impairment, we're very fortunate that we have individuals that know how to do that. Therefore, we never have any kind of limit, you know, object for my honor. But the way for a contract to show up. The way you see, the engine are huge. The massive and the very complicated. You also have a lot of power that they generate. The man in the map, 20 more damage, everywhere will be that they know every day. I ain't that nobody for telling. They do a great benefit to the community. They have a place where I can drop off all the household heavy weight in my garment. In 2023, we had 12,000 customers visiting the facility. And they know some of the material that we received. And the one thing that you should know in the amount of material that we reuse, remain available for the community. I can tell you that on Monday, we put the material out by Wednesday morning at 11:00. On Monday, there's a lot of people out there and I'm waiting for judgment. Now, if they remember that, one of the things that we roll with and it be more retirement forever, burying a bomb. Man, you alone, we had 21,000 fires on time. We're important and we have a plan we have that they knew when, you know. Again, this is where you have a means of hope. We cannot do our job without the help of our job. We cannot do our job without the help of our job. And we talked about a problem at any time, but then the whole never flew. That leaves here after we go home. They make sure that we have the equipment available, they do our job, come by me help. So what does it mean? We're almost done now, by me spending the equipment. And what it means, the airport may relation, we have to make sure all our Indians are up there. The men and women, female damage. We have five more humans left to buy, you know. We have a number more boy men when you find me at the damage job. Now, and then we'll wait a while. We don't do a lot of treatment because when you do have new equipment and that equipment, they're very technical. So how many of them have to have a new joint treatment? So we're working with the vendor and the technical, they give them that treatment. We're also working on both of them that go in at the data and over the north of data. And we almost went dead when something happened. Now, that's the kind of job we're doing in that department. That's a town we have, we have plenty of them, every woman, Bible knows how to read the Bible. By twenty-twenty-six, that means they have one damage. Develop the tremendous life of support equipment that we use, the one around the side. And again, this team, him someone that was empty there. Now, I'm very fortunate that working like that, man, damn them didn't amend the very norm. That means that naming challenges that went bad now is down. Now, at this time, I'm saying what?
Okay. On one slide, it said that there are sixteen-hundred-and-ten pounds of sharps. And I'm wondering if that's six-hundred-and-ten sharps or really sixteen-hundred-and-ten pounds of sharps?
Yeah.
Wow.
But that's good. I mean, I'm here, but then put them in the retirement. I mean, the reason why we're going to the castle of rock, all of that, the needle project. Now, yeah, it's not damage, the A and J W, the people have been done and retired forever.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Your question about the sharps, Bruce. Is it safe to assume that most of those are delivered in the sharps containers and they were medical purposes? They're not like random drug use, like illicit drug use sharps that are showing up and we get all of it, but
We have a whole team to sign the women, little ball, women container.
Yeah.
The women, the women's under.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
So you're saying the weight includes those containers they come in?
Well, I'm saying like, yeah, and you know, because when I think sharps, I always think like, you know, if you're on the beach, you're doing cleanup and the kids are like, oh, let me use needles we found. But I also think the medical use, like if you're using sharps for some medical purpose, like you can, you can stack. I mean, when we're doing that, yeah, we stacked the boxes of the containers and it definitely adds up pretty quickly, so.
Good morning. Director Shirley, director of the board and guest, Guy Fetterboard, director of engineering the district since June of two thousand and fifteen. The engineering and compliance department has a staff of five, which I'll introduce at this time. David Ramirez is the director of engineering and compliance incoming. He's going to replace me when I retire in about six months. I hired David in November two thousand and fifteen and spent a great add to the team. And that's where the engineering and compliance department started. It was a department of two. As we restructured at that time, two thousand and sixteen. Also on the team is Katie O'Connor, stands in the back here. Katie was with the district as an intern over a period of about two years, part-time. And we've had a handful of interns in state. Katie has been our star intern. And so she illustrated that when she took the advice of David and myself to gain experience in the private sector and then give us a call back several years later if she still had an interest in the solid waste industry. And fortunately, she gave us a call back and she's presently serving as the assistant engineer. She recently acquired her certification as a professional engineer in the state of California. So presently evolving her duties and we see as she took that Katie will transition into a different position in the new year, just for here. So congratulations, Katie. Katie is pictured here with our most recent intern, Maya Masias. She's not included in the headcount of five. She is a UC Berkeley student and she has finished her intern process with the district. Continuing the department of five, third on the staff is Rosio Campos. She's a recent addition to the team as in the regulatory compliance support role. And that's helping the department meet the needs of the organization in compliance support. And our most recent addition to the team is Johnny Van Dyke as a project manager. And he's going to serve in the facility maintenance lead role and help establish a more diligent and deliberate process around facility maintenance so that quality and minimum requirements and specifications are adhered to during that process. And joining Johnny as an internal resource, part-time, most recently, is Jeff Hadid. He's a going to assist in actually performing at some of that facility maintenance on a part-time basis at this time. External resources are also available for facility maintenance. And Johnny and Jeff would be involved in managing those. The department has a budget of one-point-four-million dollars around that five staff. But what I failed to mention is that David vacated a senior engineer role. So that's a part of the headcount of five. I'm not counting myself as I'm transitioning up for retirement. So we, this exception exists today in that transition that there's two directors of engineering and compliance, one onboarding, one offboarding. So there is a senior engineer role that we are looking to fill. Also in the budget is about half-million dollars in environmental and professional service contracts that aren't directly related to the personnel, but more to what the needs of the organization are. When I arrived in June of fifteen, there was a different organizational structure. It was the board of directors that had district engineer, district council as a couple of their resources. And they had the general manager as their direct report. The general manager had an assistant general manager assisting him across the enterprise. And the various department managers reported to the AGM. That was the former structure was pre-existing for decades for the district. Recognition is that the district had outgrown that structure. And so there was a change to the structure. Notably, there wasn't an engineering manager in that structure. There was a senior engineer, so it was a staff position. That was one of the recognitions, kind of a main recognition was representation at the leadership level for the operations group. And we have a hundred-plus people on site every day performing the services. It's a big lift. You saw David's presentation on the MRF and Jameson's presentation on the landfill. That's a lot of work. And that team needs representation in the leadership decision-making process. And so that's where the operations director role was created. Engineering compliance director, finance administration director, communication director, and our human resources director filled out, fill out the leadership team and it allows more strategic planning and discussions to occur. The engineering and compliance groups here inside the department provide a technical support across the enterprise. There's almost, there's very little that does not touch engineering or compliance in the activities here at the district. So the span is wide. And engineering is doing planning, project delivery and assessing project performance. We assess how the equipment or infrastructure is performing for the needs of the operation because that's who we serve. This is a service organization. Engineering compliance is here in support of those services that are being delivered. And so it's key for us to have an understanding during operations, during the life of infrastructure or equipment, how that performance is, is going. Similarly, on the compliance side, we provide a support to the various services and operations being performed. And given an illustrative example, for the voluntary retirement program that Vera referred to earlier, one of the parties that adopted that was a manager for the HHW program. And so that was roughly twenty-twenty when that occurred. So I've been here five years and in that five years, that manager needed assistance on two different occasions around a particular operating plan that required a registered engineer to be participant, to author and give guidance on. Once that, that manager was handling the compliance of that program. And so a lot of knowledge walked out the door, a lot of operational function walked out the door. And so that put the team, including the compliance piece of it in a position where we had to come up to speed with functions and elements that that manager had been self-performing well for over a decade. And so that's where we jump in, we identified the needs, we identify solutions, we help deliver those solutions. And the facility maintenance piece is the new piece to the department. And this is bringing facility maintenance into a control structure, which will have a program, plans to the program, the deliberative process. And we are presently in the startup mode for that. These are the type of activities the engineering department is currently involved in. And the first one there is the service and infrastructure master planning. We look forward to getting into that a little more detail here later today. That's a process that happens on a big scale, you know, every fifteen or twenty years. It's also, can happen on a micro scale within a particular project. And so we're involved in planning pretty constantly. Module seven is currently in construction. We'll see a little more of that. Module eight's next up. And so the design is needed to start. Landfill operations support involves a variety of things. You've heard from Jameson about the GPS and the field planning. And I'd like David to kind of speak to that element because it involves delivering new systems, which was a system for the heavy equipment, a system for collecting data and a system for utilizing and utilizing that data in planning and designs.
Yeah, and to Guy's point and Jameson's team as well, we've taken a quantum leap out there and with the landfill, with the board's approval of that GPS system, with the drone capabilities we have now, the amount of communication that we're able to deliver to the ops team so that they can actually see in three-D space these models and be able to interpret what the design means. That is a big, big jump. Katie, who was mentioned earlier, is doing the designs for their daily field plans and structuring out how things are going to get built. And Jameson's team's executed. And we brought that system on and we've been using it for under a year. And we're seeing some big benefits with it. And so appreciate the board's support on bringing those elements forward.
This natural gas to electricity conversion is a program that the Regen entered into with PG&E. They have a small service of natural gas to a few of our HVA food units. It taps into their main transmission line and that's unusual configuration. Usually there are a series of sub-transmission lines at smaller volumes and pressures. And PG&E offered the district to sign on to a program with some compensation reimbursement for making the conversion effort. But it does align with Regen's renewable energy production. We produce electricity. We can use electricity. Here's a chance to eliminate an emission source. And so that was kind of a win-win for us. That's in progress. You've heard a little bit about the which management's renewable energy being delivered to the advanced water purification facility at M1W. That's a medium voltage, twenty-one kilovolt transmission line. That's in progress. It also is kind of foundational to the microgrid, microgrid vision. That Regen had presented as part, to M1W as part of the feasibility study. And that's, that foundational element's been confirmed by the feasibility studying. And you'll hear more about that in the second part and in, and in near term when the ability presentation becomes clear. Moving on, compliance activities are here because of the regulatory framework. The Regen is not just another business. It's a business that requires approvals to perform certain activities in the solid waste industry. And those originate at the federal level and they propagate through the state and into the local level. So we're managing permits that have So we're managing permits that have a variety of conditions. And some are federal, some are state, and some are local. But the key point here is that's, that's the license. These permits are the license for what Regen does. It's not the business license that you go to city hall and pull. It's getting these permits to get the approval to perform the services and accomplish the regulations that are behind these these entities. It's the Clean Air Act, it's the Clean Water Act. You know, it's the Recra Resource Conservation Act that define that waste get managed in a specific new controlled unit. That's what a landfill is. A landfill is the solution to the waste problem. So the landfill's not the problem. It's the waste that would be the problem. It's the landfills that have the waste require a high level of management and control so that the regulations are accomplished. And that's the challenge of Regen is performing the service and accomplishing the requirements of the regulation to manage waste in a single unit for the protection of human health and the environment. Additionally, there's recycling services and diversion services and beneficial reuse services across this campus area, which is unique for Regen and for in the waste industry for that matter. And that's a whole span of activities which are really accomplishing public policy desires for recycling and diversion of those. With the compliance department being rather new, we do have a compliance software rollout. And that's again to kind of support everybody's activities around gathering data. So David, would you give an introduction to that?
Sure, thanks, Guy. Compliance does us no good if it just lives in, you know, in my head and Guy's head and the manager level. We have to be able to bring that compliance, those regulations to the actual people doing the work. And so this endeavor as far as bringing that compliance software is to get the people who are actually doing the work able to put the data into a place that they needed and be able to reference the regulations that they need to see and really lay out for them all the different pieces that their job requirements have. We've done a good job historically of doing that. And this is just going to really bring it out to staff in a better, more accessible way.
And lastly, the facility maintenance piece of the department, this is new. It's in startup mode. And it's been, the planning is going to occur. And the endeavors are here to support a variety of the needs of the various infrastructure that's present. It's like a little town over here. You got twenty acres of, you know, a dozen different buildings that have utility services. And what was the framework before was that, I mean, out there is where the operations and services are being provided. Those, some of those folks were being asked to do facility maintenance. And it wasn't quite, you know, aligned with what their skills and experiences were. So this is the formation of the facility maintenance piece of the department. And any questions?
Yeah, okay. Question?
I have one.
Okay.
Facility maintenance picture of someone addressing weeds. So are you talking about the aesthetics around all the stuff? Are you talking maintaining the facilities themselves?
It's both, but the latter being the primary. The landscaping is not as abundant in the need category as the facilities are.
And I can clarify what he's actually doing. He's digging out a meter. A meter that's had dirt that's filled into it because nobody's, it hasn't been red in a while. So what he's doing is uncovering a meter cover. And those are the kind of maintenance things where engineering needs to get a meter reading. Engineering needs some information out in the field. We have a staff member who can go get those pieces of data or actually perform maintenance such as the door is unhinged or there's a tile, a carpet tile that's been folded up. So these, some sort of routine maintenance things that need a level of skill to perform.
So routine maintenance is what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Well, it's maintenance of the whole category. This staff will be more assigned to the routine stuff because that can be planned and programmed. And the non-routine is the unexpected ones. And that will depend on the scope of the maintenance, whether it's handled internally by that team. If it's small scale or medium to large scale will be handled by, as an engineering.
Okay, but the gen worker, engine maintenance and the MRF end maintenance, that's not what we're talking about.
That's right. Those are operational maintenance. And those are the operations team. They're doing their work. They don't have time to be doing the building maintenance work.
I understand. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Guy. Helen?
Good morning, chairs and directors.
What's going on over there, Karen?
All right, so we're moving on to finance and administration. We have seventeen people in this department and it encompasses actually four departments. First is the administration where Felipe, myself, and Anna, who's pictured here, the our front person. When you come in, you see her smiling at you every morning. And then we also have Ida Gonzalez, who is our vote clerk. And then we have finance. There are five staff in there, including Gertsen and four others. And then we have the scales, who is a team of seven individuals. And then we have safety and risk management, which is a department of two people. So in the administration, in the administration function, we do primarily customer service, not only for internal customers, but also external customers. We handle a lot of phone calls. Managing, we'll take them and sort of send them out to whoever they need to go. We answer questions with regards to not only scale questions, but any kind of questions. For example, where do we send our batteries to or how do we do that? And some questions, we obviously we forward over to public education for more information to chart. They're asking about employment and so forth. And then in the finance team, we do the financial reporting, budgeting, financial compliance, employee compensation, they process all the payroll. They do all your report to the board every morning regarding, every board meeting regarding the updates for where we are at the moment. And then the scales, the scale house, they process all the inbound and outbound material. So they charge for all the fees. So basically, most of our fees come through that scale. And then safety and risk, they develop safety programs for the site and they coordinate the safety staff training. And within the administration, we also do contract reviews. We do the legal reviews. And we do a lot of compliance and we do property insurance. So if you notice, our operating budget is eleven point three million. And the reason for that is actually five, two of that is amortization and depreciation. And then roughly one point four of that is insurance costs for property and liability. And then we have closure, because closure costs in there as well. And we have government fees in there as well. So basically, anything that's not allocated to any of the departments are in that category. Next. So the next couple of slides, we're going to be going through the financial situation of the district currently. And this is as on January twenty-four. February is being closed at the moment. The closing process will happen this week, so it will be recorded from the beginning. So year-to-date, our tip revenues is about twenty-three million or about three hundred forty million, about three hundred forty thousand or one point five percent under budget. And it's roughly about two and a half million or twelve point four percent higher than prior year, same time as year. Our year-to-date revenue, other operating revenue is seven point six million. And that is about eight hundred and ten or eleven point nine million over budget. And that encompasses the MRF, the CRV, the household hazardous, sand revenue, CNG revenue, and our power revenue. So the year-to-date MRF and CRV revenue accounts for six million on that. And on that, one point four million comes from the single stream and two point four million comes from the CRV of that six million. The hazardous waste is about a hundred and nine thousand K. And sand revenue is about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand and CNG is three hundred seventy-two thousand. And power revenue, which did not make this slide at the time, is nine hundred and seventy-one thousand. So total revenue year-to-date is about thirty point one million. Here's a graphical pie chart by customer, how the revenue is broken out. As you can see, roughly forty-four point four percent of it is coming from regional customers. And twenty-five percent, roughly twenty-five percent is coming from the franchise haulers. Commercial accounts for three point eight percent, excuse me, twelve point eight, three percent. And cash customers roughly comes out to about eighteen percent. I'm going to pass this on this way. Now we go through tonnage. So apartment tonnage received year-to-date is about four hundred and sixty-three thousand tons. And it's about roughly twenty-four thousand tons higher than prior year. And MSW tonnage is about three hundred and twenty-three tons. And materials received at the market is sixty thousand tons. The rolling average diversion for the entire MRF is sixty-two point four compared to fifty-six percent last year. The twelve-month rolling average diversion for CND material is fifty-six point seven percent. Same percentage as last year, this time of year. And the twelve-month rolling average for diversion in single stream material is sixty-three point one percent, slightly lower than last year's, though sixty-seven point four percent. The scale tickets processed are a hundred and forty-two thousand tickets as compared to a hundred twenty-seven thousand. So as you can see, we've had an uptick of traffic. So one of the initial, one of the trainings that the scale house is getting ready to do is traffic flow for all the staff so that we don't have to rely on having to pull someone off the side of the street teams or someone off the market team to come and patrol or traffic. And trans by customers. Hi, you can see regional represents roughly, as Felipe mentioned earlier today, roughly fifty-one percent of the transfer to the same franchise holders account for about fourteen percent. And then we have customers, cash customers about twelve percent and commercial about twenty-three percent. And then we go through cost of employment is roughly about ten point nine million or it's three hundred and eighteen thousand below budget. And then we have non-operating, non-employment operating expenses as well. Fifteen point three million or one point eight million or thirteen point one million, thirteen point one percent, excuse me, over budget. Total operating expenses are twenty-six point one million and are about one point four million over budget. And operating income today is four point five million, nine hundred seventy-five under budget this year. Today, net income is about four point seven million and is about nine to ten percent below budget. And here's a graphical representation of our expenses. As you can see, the bulk of our expenses is roughly about forty-two percent, as Mayor Degau pointed out earlier today. And we have a big percentage for amortization of depreciation of eleven point two. We have ten point three percent for recycling services. And the other bigger expenses there are repairs and maintenance, the environmental services and fuel costs. If you notice, there's also, we have other operating expenses there, roughly one point four million. And that includes our office expenses, closure, hazard waste feeds, safety improvement, utility, small amounts that are navigated together. And then we have diversion here for the, this is the single stream recycling diverted materials. You can see the majority of it is the OCC cardboard, which is about forty-six percent. And then the next biggest item we have is a mixed glass and mixing area. And we have quite a bit is the PET as well, plastics. And we have CND material, diverted materials. The bulk of it is our under from the sword line, ADC, which goes up to the landfill. Then we have wood and metal, which accounts for the other larger percentages of wood, about twenty percent, and metal about twenty-three point three percent. And then we have sheet rock, so you can see most of it is really truly construction material. Do we have any questions? I'm sorry, I went rapidly. I'm trying to be tight.
Yes, thank you so much. Just a really quick question. The under budget for the cost of employment or a million, is that because of vacancies that was discussed from HR earlier?
Most likely it is. Bart, you have the data one and I did.
Oh yeah, a big part of the under would be the fact that there are vacancies which have not been filled. And there's also a component, therefore, for some insurance and workers' comp costs which were lower than the original budget.
Okay, thank you.
Similar question. Two big numbers seem to be non-employment operating expenses are one point eight million over budget. And there was, and two point eight million higher than last year. So is there a reason, a primary reason?
A big, big part of that is likely our slinging costs and also the cost of we pay primarily to Keith Day, the processing of green waste and food waste components. There's a very high volume going through there, which is higher than what we had last year and higher than what we expected in the budget original. That's the biggest part of it.
So it's a good thing we have a lot of organics being diverted through Keith Day, but it's quite expensive.
Yes, that's a very good way to look at it. It's good we're diverting, but it is costing us. Again, and we did have a price increase with Keith Day. This year, he negotiated a higher price because once we started introducing food waste products with the green waste, increased his costs processing it is in. And so we, you know, we sat down, talked with him and, you know, came up with some higher prices. And they said the volume has been higher than what the original projected for this year, which is, as you said, a good thing.
So the CRV income, when people bring things that can be sold, correct? Is it my, I think it's my understanding that wine bottles now are going to be part of that? So we have, including Parata into that CRV scenario. Great.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And I'm always impressed by the finances. The department expenses are well illustrated and the materials that are being processed and the fees collected also well accounted for. I think, though, there is an opportunity to marry the two of them and see what is the revenue side for a material accepted versus the expense incurred by the district in handling that material. And just as an example, I suspect, but I can't tell from these numbers, that the disposal fees, I suspect. that the, um, disposal fees, I suspect subsidize the single-stream recyclables, the MRF. But I don't know how, and they have different customers. So some customers are getting subsidized at the expense of other customers. You know, I think it's an opportunity for us to think about that.
All right, thank you, Melon.
All right, and the last one up, and I'll go a little bit by design because all of the great presentations that you've seen, we get to talk about. My name is Zoe Shosson, the Director of Communications, and I've got a fabulous team of four. We have Chris and O'Hara pictured here as our manager in the department. Eric Palmer, who you've seen to them, uh, most recently on social media. And Franco Guzman, who is mostly dedicated to schools as our specialist in the department. Uh, we have an operating budget of, um, five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So that does not include employment costs, but that's the cost that it takes to educate and communicate, uh, to the public. And we have a number of different, uh, key initiatives that we take in our department. So most of those fall under external or internal communications. Um, messaging varies between those two departments. Um, some of the main things that we do, um, also have to do with jurisdictional compliance. Uh, so your city's compliance, uh, on many things related to how recycle the legislation that gets passed the state. Um, that's done mostly through the technical advisory committee, which we hear me speak about on a monthly basis to the board. And, uh, we also submit some reports on behalf of the member jurisdictions, uh, where that counts like compliance, and that happens on an annual basis. Some of the, uh, so that's kind of a compliance issue. Um, some of the other fun things that we get to do include branding, rebranding. That was a, certainly a highlight of my career to be able to help rebrand this agency or media in Monterey. We work on all the messaging for, um, materials received. We work with the haulers very closely, with the cities very closely, to make sure unified messaging about acceptance of material happens, um, across, uh, our county. And in addition, with Slane and Valley Recycle. Um, realizing that we have one media market here in Monterey County and trying to communicate uniformly is really important, especially given the complexity of things like recycling. Uh, media relations, so work with, uh, many of the, uh, reporters in our area. We see an article coming out soon on S B thirteen eighty-three in the Herald, um, that I've been working on this week. We also maintain, uh, the website, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Uh, social media channels, we are on Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, Nextdoor, YouTube. And, uh, Threads, which is kind of Twitter-esque. And, um, we also manage school programs. I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute, but we have Franco Guzman, who goes into the schools and provides, uh, technical assistance and education to not only children, but also the administrators and teachers. Outreach events, you can see Chris being here at one of our outreach events. Uh, we tend to go to one outreach event per jurisdiction per year. Um, that's compounded mostly in April around Earth Day events, but, uh, the other ones are scattered throughout the year. And we work closely with the haulers to attend those events as well. Um, we also attend quite a few community-based collaborative working groups. Uh, we've got, uh, groups that kind of spring up in the community where we are trusted advisors and partners on initiatives. Uh, some of those include, uh, Plastics Pollution Coalition, Director Shirley sits on that as well. Um, Central Coast Recycling and Media Coalition, that's a tri-county, uh, group that deals with many issues, waste and waste-related. Um, Illegal Dumping, um, Task Force, headed by, uh, Maria Dredin, uh, from the county of Monterey. And, um, we also handle, um, quite a few different campaigns. So you talked, who was it, Jay, I think, might have mentioned about batteries, batteries being a big issue. You know, we're working on battery campaigns. Uh, we're working on campaigns for S B thirteen eighty-three and trying to get more community involvement in putting food scraps in the green, in the green cart. So lots of fun things we get to work on. So our technical advisory committee, uh, I'll skim over this because I talk about it on a monthly basis, but we've been focusing on thirteen eighty-three compliance, various aspects of that. Um, we're also going to be looking at the RSG process for the franchise member agencies in the coming years. So one of the agreements that Felipe had mentioned, the seven member agencies using green waste recovery, how to move forward in that. So we'll be making, um, some recommendations to the various boards and councils on, on that. Um, another thing that we're working on is a site signage refresh. If you've driven or toured our site, you'll see there's various signs all over. And they all look different and they've all been created at different times. So with the rebrand, that's one of the things that we want to do is, one, help people feel welcome at our site, get to the destinations they need to get to, and then accommodate in an easy way. So you'll see a presentation coming from me on that in the coming months. And we're, um, with the rebrand, we've got kind of a new story to tell. Um, all the great diversion programs that we have on our site, we want to make sure that the website reflects all of those. So making sure that we're very service-oriented, and we are as an organization, but making sure the website reflects that is something that any initiative that we're going to be taking. School programs, Franco Guzman is out in the schools right now. Mostly what he's doing now is S B thirteen eighty-three compliance for those schools. They each have that mandate, so he's going out there and providing technical assistance, making sure the sorting stations with the three, three bins, food, uh, recycling and trash are all put together, also edible food recovery, donation, uh, stations. So he's working with the schools to make sure they're in compliance alongside the haulers. And, uh, one of our initiatives is also to increase our social media and build our audience. Uh, Eric Palmer on our team does a fantastic job of storytelling on our social media channels. And one of the things that we want to do is leverage and build our audience, uh, with that. So we're working on some initiatives there and, um, it'll be, it'll be in conjunction with our technical advisory committee. Some of the internal communications initiatives we've been working on is making sure that the staff here at Regen feels very connected to our strategic plan. So a lot of the initiatives that the board puts into place, making sure the staff is aware of those initiatives on a free detailed level that includes our mission, business priorities and values as an organization. And one of the things that we're going to be working, uh, on in the future is making sure that we are walking the walk, walking our mission. So, um, that our staff is all very aware of how to sort properly. And, um, this is kind of living that mission here at Regen. With that, I can take any questions?
Thank you, Zoe. Questions for Zoe? Great job, thank you. Um, all right, Felipe.
Can you afford a four-minute break for?
Yeah, I think everyone.
So, so five-minute break, five-minute max.
Welcome back from the break, uh, Director Shirley and the Board of Directors. This next part of the presentation will be presenting the current development plan. And that current development plan is defined by the solid waste facility permit and, uh, related, uh, waste discharge requirement permit that's issued by the state. And it, it basically calls for three hundred and fifteen acre landfill to be developed. And, uh, it allows for operation of a recycling facility and, uh, that, uh, acting as a transfer station. Um, household hazardous waste program is part of that permit. Um, but the, the message here for you to take away is that those permits define what gets done here at the site. So change, any changes to what gets done here at the site may require a different permitting. So this first part will just be foundational to, uh, give you information around the current site development permit. And David Ramirez, your incoming Director of Engineering Compliance, will be giving the presentation.
Thanks, Guy. Good morning, Director Shirley and all Board of, uh, Board Directors and guests that we have here today. As Guy mentioned, my name's David Ramirez, I'm the incoming Director of Engineering and Compliance. And he kind of teed it up very nicely for me and, and I won't talk more about the purpose of the slides. But what we're going to go over here, click here. Is a number of things Guy mentioned, and the main takeaway is that I think Regen wants me to understand from this are, are as follows. Regen has an existing infrastructure, has existing infrastructure within our current landfill footprint. And I'm going to go in detail about, about these items, but these are the main takeaways I want to kind of tee you up with. The permitted landfill will displace the existing infrastructure unless other plans are adopted. Permitting, planning, construction and construction timelines vary depending on what's decided. That has its own timeline, if other things are decided, we, we have a different timeline. And we're talking about planning that can take up ten years to, to, to do, plus tenure plus. And what we're proposing to the board, or we will be proposing to the board, is an update of the master plan. So I thought rather than talk and wave my hands a lot about what we do, I thought I would show you what we do with the virtual tour. And you have included in your packet a bigger map than the, than the slides that, like that we have. So if anybody's missing one, I have extras, uh, to go over. Everybody's got it, okay. So. Here's drone video of this facility. And I'll be narrating as we go by, I'll be your tour guide. As you can see here, this is the entrance scale that we have, the scale where customers come in. And here is the material recovery facility, the MRF. How many bailers in there, David? There is one bailer in there, yeah. And then, uh, the number one on the top corresponds to the number one in the path on their map. And we're flying over towards the landfill. So up here, the entrance road comes up here. And then customers are coming into the landfill, backing into the open active base. Jamison's team is on duty pushing the waste with the bulldozers and the compactors are compacting it to make sure we optimize the efficiency, efficient use of the space, of the landfill space. See our beautiful Slane and Valley there as well? This is gypsum processing, and gypsum is a additive into the compost which actually lowers the pH of the soil. So that's why we separate it out and, um, use it as additive to the compost. You can see our concrete reci, concrete receiving area and the crushed aggregate that is here. So when customers come in, they'll dump in this area, we'll crush it, make it into a, a, a base rock. Actually, Don Chapin is the one who crushes it. In addition, there's a sand processing facility that's behind here where sand is mined for future landfill space. It's washed to get the fine material out, the dust material. And then it gets used in playgrounds and in golf courses, which you may have played on. And this is the excavate, actual excavation in process. So they're mining, making a, a building material and they're mining out future landfill space.
Is that a particular module?
It's what, I'm sorry?
Is that a particular module or not?
Not yet, it will be, yeah. Um, that's an undeveloped area. Here we have the module, modules one through six are here to the right of this water feature. And then on the left is the module seven that's currently under construction right now. Um, this water feature will be removed, water will be diverted around and behind the future landfill module seven. And, um, we expect the construction to, to kick off again here in, in April. Then we're coming up on the biochar facility there. Kind of make it out and then, and then our truck yard. And you see the path of the landfill is right through here, if you look at your maps. You know, the path of the landfill is through here, and this is the, the franchise truck yard. And then this is another look at the franchise truck yard, going to do a horseshoe pattern around it. This is their administration building. This is the CNG, uh, fueling components. This here is the maintenance facility.
I feel like we're at a CIA meeting.
This is the truck wash, the garbage trucks that get washed, bins need to be washed. Uh, and then you also see those, those bins that get rolled out to the customers stored here. As well as some roll-off bins for the larger customers, uh, construction contracting customers. And then here you have the garbage trucks lined up, getting fueled with compressed natural gas, CNG. And these are also fueling stations, they're on, on routes right now, so that's why they're not, uh, you don't see them in the fueling stations. And then the composting facility. Uh, this video is limited to the features that we're going to be talking about today that are within the landfill footprint. So there's still a lot to see with the MRF. The player, the LFG, the Last Chance, but we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, skip those. So if you could look at the scale of the, of the facility, you know, you have a loader down there, you have a semi-truck down there. Um, this is the trommel screen. These are windrows, uh, composting, the receiving area is here, where they're receiving the green waste and the mixed food waste in this area. You see some getting loaded up with compost down there.
Total acreage is about?
For the composting?
The whole thing.
It's about three hundred and fifteen?
Oh, wow, no, that's the landfill future footprint, the total property is four hundred and seventy acres?
Thank you.
And then this, this is the campus, you see Last Chance down there, shop and where we are, which is the administration building.
Is that available on the website?
It's not, it's fresh off the.
You think it will be someday?
We'll, we'll, we'll talk about it. See what we, see what we can do.
I want, I want to talk.
So I will say, all this was produced internally, so the feature, the feature that. The features and capabilities that the board has, 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 uh, supported us on is really giving you guys these kinds of looks at the, uh, at the facility and, and what we do. So we appreciate that, being able to show it, being able to show it to you. This is a three-D model of the facility and it kind of mirrors what you saw on that original map. And notice that, that on the right-hand side, we have a three-D model which shows the future build out of the landfill up to elevation two hundred and eighty-four. And the model on the right-hand side is the kind of models that Katie builds to deliver to our, our landfill staff. And the kind of models, uh, Jamison's team uses to actually build the landfill. And we got another cool video here just showing things in motion. On the left is the current site, which we, uh, photomapped with the drone. And on the right is the, the visualization we can create. And this really shows our capabilities, it, it comes to life for our operating staff. They know what they're building and they can see what's, what's going on.
If you could go back one slide for a moment? It's, uh, just to reinforce, uh, the, kind of, one of the takeaways. Um, number four in yellow and number five in pinkish are franchise truck yard and compost facilities. They are sighted under, um, the future, or a future portion of the landfill. It's not tomorrow, you know, it's not next year. Probably have, uh, thirty years on, on the, on those two areas potentially. But we, the, the need is to be planning for those changes. And, um, that's, uh, one of the questions you'll be left with today is, um, in the, do the, do we plan for those, a future for those two facilities? Because the present permit would dictate that the tran, franchise truck yard and the compost facility will be removed when that portion of the landfill gets built.
And we're more of the same permitted landfill footprint that we just saw in the three-D model, it's represented here in the purple. The existing landfill that's been developed is in the blue, modules one through six.
And one through seven is just below them in the middle?
Seven is, seven is right there. That, that, that little flag there. In this purple area, there is a number of pieces, number of pieces of infrastructure, one of which we mentioned earlier is a stormwater pond. So the stormwater that comes out of the landfill and the, uh, other areas on site do go to a stormwater pond that is in, within the landfill footprint. There's also that sand processing area we saw. That's in the landfill footprint, concrete recycling is located in the footprint. The gypsum receiving storage area is within the landfill footprint. The truck yard is within the landfill footprint and the compost facility is within the landfill. The truck yard is within the landfill footprint, and the compost facility is within the landfill footprint. These various pieces of infrastructure need to be relocated over time. As Guy mentioned, we do have time to plan for these relocations. There are some that are within the next five years, and those are the concrete recycling area. See, that's got to come out in order to build future modules. You have the gypsum area that has to come out. Sand processing also needs to come out. And the gypsum area and the concrete recycling are likely things we can relocate to the top of the landfills. So they likely have a, a spot to go, the sand processing, because it requires a pond and it requires special infrastructure to wash the sand to make it a viable product. That's going to take a little more planning. But the big one, the big one coming in, coming over your desk or to your dais really soon is a planning element for this stormwater pond. And that stormwater pond needs to be relocated, and it can be relocated into a number of areas. One area we're considering now is, is, is in this area where we have agricultural fields. The red line that you see is our property line, and purple is the landfill footprint. And then the two big elephants in the room, the truck yard and the compost facility, those require some discussion by the Board. What are our plans as an organization for those as we develop the landfill footprint? Those have a longer timeframe, but they do require some, some discussion at the Board level to give staff direction on how we want to proceed.
And they're larger in size, so it presents a challenge in finding the location for those, if they are, you know, for them to move to.
I don't want to leave time for questions, so we have nine minutes that we're going over this. So apologize if I'm going quick. So this is a timeline that kind of demonstrates what can be possible. On the right-hand side, we have our future in about 30 years. And that, under our current plan, shows that we're going to be maintaining the current landfill permitted footprint. Existing programs are going to be removed, and any plans for additional infrastructure are undefined right now. So this is kind of the, the path we're on unless we change course. And we are, have a potential future. You know, if we break from that path now, we can explore a number of options. But these options take probably up to around 10-plus years to develop, depending on what's, what, what are choices. We can maintain permitted landfill footprint area, but we have to relocate existing programs such as the truck yard and the compost facility. That, that's an option. That's option A. We would need more property for that, to do that. Option B, we can reconfigure the landfill footprint and keep existing programs in their current locations, the truck yard, truck yard and the compost. That requires more property. Also, 10-plus years to develop. And these are crystal ball timelines throwing at you. We, 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 we do need to develop this out in the master plan. Or option C, reconfigure the landfill footprint, which requires new property, or relocate the existing programs on or off-site. When I say off-site, that off-site could be nearby property, it could be off-site in another part of our, our area, county or something, some other location. These are all big decisions that need to be discussed. But again, the big takeaway is, in, 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 it's more current, is the stormwater pond, which needs to be planned out within the next five years. And this is, this is my slide to just bring it home. You know, we have less than five years on these items, and the Board needs to discuss these, these items on the bottom there. So what is master planning? We kind of touched on it a little earlier. Master planning is different from strategic planning. Master planning really deals with the infrastructure we have on site, the land, how we use it, and where these elements are all going to sit, and it's calling it the what goes where of facility development. It includes land planning, program citing, conceptual field sequencing, landfill utility development, landfill requires gas collection, requires storm drain infrastructure, requires leachate collection. We have to look at the regulatory framework for each one of these changes and how they are going to impact those plans. There's also an opportunity to initiate environmental protection opportunities that can range from all sorts of possibilities.
And modules one and two are online, so there's a potential scenario that a, a downgrade in lining system, liner system could be quite adjacent to those two, and that would in, 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 increase level of environmental protection.
There's also considerations for future liability reduction and also cost benefit analysis. We're going to go over this again. We're bringing the, the master plan to you again to actually discuss when we, this is just an opener to get you motivated for master planning and understand, understand what we're talking about here. So what's next? With Board's concurrence, we're going to be initiating a master plan update, and in that, we're going to be bringing forth to you master planning design services, a set of prioritized infrastructure that we want to discuss. And then we also plan for there to be future, bigger strategic discussions about some of these elements as well. So just hope you guys are really motivated now. You see, I see, you see what we see in, in the development as engineers, and these are all solvable problems. These are all things that we can tackle. We have the time to do it now. And so by acting now, we can really make a big impact on the future of this organization, so that the, the future is very clear.
So well, so we, we, we have a couple of minutes for questions right now, but I want you to know that we want your questions and thoughts later as well, so you're welcome to email them to Felipe and myself, so we can start bundling and figuring out how we're going to tackle these on our agendas coming in the future. So, David, thank you, but any quick questions for David so we can get everyone else out on time?
Do you have a, a big map showing land, showing the 400-plus acre boundary, so we can say, what about there? What about there?
You're looking at it. The red line is our property line.
Okay, I don't see red, so that's why it's.
It's that line here.
Okay.
It's in there, in your package.
Yeah, I just don't see red.
He doesn't see red.
Yeah, we'll get it later. Thank you.
Any, Mayor Peak?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Yes, it's a great set of questions for the Board, a lot of challenges. I'm not sure be able to provide really good input until we know what the direction is in terms of customers. And so, well, I think we should see is the forecasts for the amount of material being received over the, well, through 2015 at least, to be able to really understand what are the impacts of, of all these choices. So two-thirds of the disposal comes from outside the region, but we have contracts. And, and we are, but to also consider, what do we take to break some of these or terminate some of these contracts as an, as an option to reduce the, the, the timing for all these expenditures?
And I think, well, both of these can't live in isolation, right? The finance is, and, and to talk about finances, you need to understand this piece as well. So you know, it's a whole package here as far as the organization, so you're, you're spot on. It's, it's knowing both, both sides.
And specifically for the landfill and its development, that is a rate process. It's dictated by what comes in the front gate. If there's more material coming in for front gate for disposal, it's going to live a lower amount of years.
Okay, um, thank you very much, David. I, I want to thank staff for this great presentation. I want to think about, I want to thank the directors for taking this time out of your day. I know that this is a big ask too, so thank you for your engagement and being here. We have a lot more to talk about. This is a great starting point.